All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have a moment of silent prayer, be followed by the pledge of allegiance. And if you would, please stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 20th, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk. There's been a request by department to remove item number three, recommendation for contract amendment, SS number seventeen dash one thirty-eight, purchase image trend elite rescue license for the fire department as they are still gathering information and negotiating on that. Is there a second? Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next one I would like to remove also is a request by legal to remove item fifteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash two zero one, ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended specifically part two, chapter fourteen, dealing with animals. Is there a second? Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Are there any others?
Yes, I'd like to move to the regular agenda, item number five, recommendation for award consulting services for jail and court management system.
Madam Clerk, are you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Are there any others? All right, here and done, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Excuse me, citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of thirty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Kenneth Jackson. And as Mr. Jackson comes to the podium, I would just make note that Commissioner Elena Reeves is joining us via Zoom this evening. Yes, sir. If you would, state your name and county of your residency.
My name is Kenneth Jackson, live in Clayton County. I'm a sixty-six-year-old Navy veteran and a business owner here in Clayton County for the last ten years. I'm here to report that I was tortured by the sheriff, by the Clayton County Sheriff's Department, and it was signed off on by Sheriff Levon Allen. In February, I went to the Ethics Board to report that a Tiffany Gray Coles, Tiffany Gray Jones, who sits on the Ethics Board for Clayton County, actually lives in Henry County. She also has a felony, she's also under felony investigation, and there's a hundred and fifty thousand civil suit. I went to pass that information on to the board. Once I got to the board, I presented it, she was there, she contacted security. Security passed that information on to Lieutenant David Starcher. He then passed that information on to Sheriff Levon Allen. Within two hours of that, there was a warrant issued for my arrest. The next day at eight o'clock at nighttime, twenty SUVs, forty military armed officers showed up to my residence. They surrounded my house, they pulled out the bull horns, they said, "Come out with your hands up." Dogs, full military machines, M-16 rifles, they surrounded my house. I was scared. So what I did was I took a page out of the Panther handbook. I stripped down to my underwear, I laid on my back, because I knew this was about to be a George Floyd moment. I laid on my back, I told the officers to enter the premises. They entered the premises, they cleared all the rooms with the M-16s, M-16 rifles. They flipped me onto my back, tightened the cuffs as tight as possible, and they dragged me to the van. What they do is they drag you to the van, they lay you on the handcuffs, on the steel handcuffs on your back, and they take you for the ride of your life. The goal is to maim and to hurt and to send a message, and they did exactly that. I screamed from Jonesboro to Morrow in the back of this van as they tossed and turned. It got so bad, the officers had to stop the van, and this is what they did. They dragged me out to the back of the van, onto the ground, tightened the cuffs even tighter, threw me back into the van. Got into the van, again, they inflicted maximum pain. Once I got to the police station, since I the police station, I was in jail for twenty-four hours. The conditions in that jail are horrible, pee on the floor, feces on the floor. I spent twenty-four hours in jail. When it was time to go in front of the judge, the judge had five words for me. Case dismissed, leave Tiffany alone, you can go. There's no record that I was even in jail. As a result of that, I was subjected to, like I said, this torture. My civil rights, my human rights-
I'm sorry, sir, but your time is up.
-and the misuse of public funds were used. I intend on taking this to the Justice Department, and in the morning you will see the first-
Thank you, sir.
...of a series of TikTok videos outlining my situation.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Unincorporated, Clayton County. I want to make a statement, and I hope that the citizens are mindful of this as they come before the board to speak, and I'm pretty sure elected officials in the department here is on mindful. As we have these meetings, we are viewed all over the world. And it disturbs me when I meet with developers, and I have one that's willing to come here, and we're dealing with a national chain, and we have to defend the actions as they do their due diligence on Clayton County. So as we have grievances, I think there's a way to solve our grievances behind the scenes prior to coming before the board, because if we're trying to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence, then everybody's got to be mindful that they play a significant part as the world views us as a community. So when we have our frustrations and we have disappointments, and we come here for this diocese to speak to the board of commissioners, be mindful that we're being watched all over the world. Right currently, right now, this is live, and people such as myself that work in economic development, Ms. Rocker might be a dispelled a little bit more on this issue that we are having as far as the image that is out there as far as trying to move these things forward on economic development in Clayton County. So I just wanted to say to the citizens and everybody, be mindful that people are viewing us from all over the world. Thank you.
Prentice Davis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Prentice Davis. I've been a resident of Clayton County, proud resident, for twenty years. About the last five years, well, first of all, I'm sorry, thank you for the board for allowing us to speak, Fire Department, Police Department, and of course, the military. I've been a proud resident for twenty years of Clayton County. And now it seems as though with the shift, I guess since post-COVID, with the Section Eight and the crime, they go hand in hand. So I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that in the past, especially in the black community, we thrived off the no snitching policy. And I want to tell all the citizens of Clayton County, if you want the Fire Department, the Police Department, and everyone to do their job, you have to start speaking up. You can't keep your mouth closed anymore because you're going to run the good citizens out of the county. I love Clayton County. If I didn't, I wouldn't have been there for twenty years. I've seen a lot of changes, and that's no disrespect to someone who comes from an impoverished environment. I come from one. But with Section Eight coming to the suburbs, it is truly hurting our quality of life. And I just want the board to understand, I guess if it's something that they can do to, I guess, relegate or even, I guess, put more restraint or more restrictions, if they can, on these investors, because when you bring Section Eight out to our communities, they're going to smoke, they're going to drink, and they're going to really, really hurt your quality of life. Other than that, I want to say thank you to all of you for allowing me to speak. But my biggest concern is how Section Eight impacts our quality of life. Okay? Thank you all.
Nancy Howard.
All right, good evening. Nancy Howard Incorporated, Morrow. So I'm here to advocate mainly on recycling and amnesty day. The last time we had an amnesty day was April of last year, 2023. Every day I receive calls, emails, and just people stop me everywhere about, "When is Clayton County having an amnesty day?" So just FYI, EPD does have funded right now. They have two point five funds allocated for recycling and waste diversion and one point five for tire amnesty. And American Recycles Day is November sixteenth, sorry, fifteenth of this year. So if you want to make an event, then that'll be the awesome, perfect day to do that.
And we have been having discussions about an amnesty day, so that should be forthcoming. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I want to talk with you after. Are you going to be here for the-
Yes, ma'am.
For the talk, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Today I would like to talk about taxes, assessment, and millage rate. Now, I know we just got through with that situation, and I want to explain what I feel and what I saw there. It's late to talk about what's behind us, but it's not too early to talk about the next assessment, the next millage rate, and the next situation with our tax problem. I can't solve all the money problems. I know we're at a ninety-nine million dollar deficit here, but the critical point is our elderly and people on fixed income. And these are our legacy people in this county. These are the pioneers of this county. These are the people that built this county when they were young. And now they're old, retired, and on fixed incomes. The situation I want to present to you is not going to be a fix-all for all the county problems. But I want to address the elderly and the people on fixed incomes who you say are the important people and that you really care about them. To show that you really care about these people, in the upcoming year, I would like to see y'all put in place, along with Commissioner Smith, our tax assessor, a moratorium on these people's homes. This is not to say that I'm doing the county or will do the county out of business. This is to say that these people will stay in their homes until it is sold. And at the time of sale, like they do with the farmers, putting their land in a situation where taxes won't go up and we won't be forced off our land, do the same for the elderly and the people on fixed incomes. Then when the land, when the property is sold, either the buyer or the seller, if it is sold before the end of that abatement, then somebody is going to pay the back taxes on it. I know I was a bit vague in some part of my conversation here, but I will ask, do any of you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Garber, but I can tell you, I have actually been creating a white paper for and working with or speaking with the COO on two concepts very similar to that. So I'm already working on that, and hopefully we can get them done.
Sir, I would like to request that when you meet with these people, that the citizens have a chance to come in and be part of that assessment so that we can work together.
Right now it's just a concept. And so he and I have been sitting down talking about it, but right now it's just a concept.
I won't stand here and argue with you, Commissioner Davis. Thank you all for your time. Do any of you others have questions for me?
No. We're good.
Then I feel that you understood completely what I said. Thank you.
Reverend Otis Pruitt.
My name is Otis Pruitt. I live at nineteen eighty-four Surrey Lane in Jonesboro, Georgia, whereby I live in the Waybridge subdivision. Most of those that live in our community are elderly people, and they have been there quite a while. And we had some concerns about the new development as it relates to the new development off of Mountain Zion Road. And we had two great concerns. At first, I see that the planning and zoning staff recommended denial, but on August the fifth, it came back and it got an approval. Well, we was in discussion with the developers on two items that, if you all are going to approve it, that they be in place in concrete, that they be a part of the approval process. And that is that they had some plans to cut a road that would go straight through our neighborhood, which we talked with them, and they agreed not to cut the road. They had claimed that they needed the road for emergency purposes, but we know that it wouldn't stay that way. So we demanded, and they agreed, that they would not cut the road. And then on top of that, we demanded a privacy fence eight feet higher, and they agreed on that. My understanding, that's understood. But I'm here to make sure that it's put in concrete. It's a part of the approval process that these two things take place before they start their development. And that's, Lamar, you and I spoke about this, that's all that I want to make sure that we have agreed with the developers, that these two items would be in place if you all approved it. And as you know, they are talking about developing something like seven point nine three acres. So it's going to be a huge subdivision. And our little community there, we've been here, we want to make sure that we have some privacy. If you all would do that, we would be grateful. And many of the, I'm on the board in our subdivision, and they asked me to come to make sure and ask, make a request that these two items be in place. Lamar, we have talked about it. That's all we asked, if you approve it.
Thank you, sir. And that's Commissioner Dematt Davis.
As long as you don't call me something, I'm fine. But let me let you understand, I've spoken to them, and that is on the agenda for this evening. They have requests to be tabled because we have that issue as well as a couple of other issues that we're going to address with them.
Thank you. Warren Head, Junior.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you all this evening? My name is Warren Sehead, Junior. Live at seventy-two thirty-seven Cherokee Court in Riverdale. This is, of course, my daughter's home. We have been there with my daughter for approximately two years when she had her child. So we're there to basically help her raise her child, give her that support that she needs. We're looking at building an in-law suite, which my wife and I are paying for because we just sold our house in Atlanta. The in-law suite, we have architectural plans, of which I'm sure you're already aware of. And the suite is approximately eight hundred square feet. This will be living quarters for myself and my wife to be able to make arrangements to help my daughter take care of my grandson. Previously, the advisory board have requested a additional water table on the building. That is in the architectural plans. Our architects have already taken care of that. There is also an extended pad which is there that was previously at the house, which they did not recognize in the plans, but that pad is there. We're hoping that based on the necessary information that you already have with the architectural plans and what has been presented by the advisory board for approval, that this is approved tonight. And again, we thank you very much for your time.
Looks like Levy Benny. Mr. Benny. B-E-N-N-Y. Jessica Head.
Good evening. I don't have any other comments aside from what my father said, so thank you all.
Thank you. Natalie Moran. Moran, thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to try to speak quick because I'm unlimited. My name's Natalie. I'm actually a resident of Gwinnett County, but I work in Clayton County as a nurse. And I'm here representing animal welfare, which I know maybe often doesn't get spoken about. But we have requested a few things at the animal welfare meetings recently at Clayton County. The next one is September tenth, and I will be following up with Captain Turnip Seed and the board with those. One is requesting an executive order to waive reclaim fees for lost pets for first-time offenders due to the economy. I know most pets at Clayton County hit the urgent euthanasia list within three weeks. That's not a lot of time for somebody to reclaim their lost pet for that fee. Obviously, repeat offenders, that could be looked at differently. Number two, volunteer programs. We have been turned down at the last June meeting at the animal welfare for Captain Turnip Seed to implement a volunteer program due to the inmate volunteer program there. Obviously, for liability reasons, those would need to be separated. But I have learned with multiple counties over the state of Georgia, having a volunteer program does increase adoptions, better quality of life for kennelled dogs, better outcomes for their behaviors, and successful adoptions as well. I volunteer at many counties all over the state, so I attend meetings and observe how other counties do things, see what works, see what does not, and try to implement them in counties that need more of them in ways that they do work, which is why I do more animal welfare for Clayton County, even though I'm not a resident here than any other county because it's expressed such an important need in Clayton County right now that I've seen. On a statewide level, quickly, I've redirected much of my volunteer work towards lobbying and partnering with others who can help us increase grants and funding towards a Georgia spay-neuter sterilization fund. I know my friend Harriet spoke at this meeting on animal welfare two weeks ago, and she gave you guys what funding had been given out to what counties and the amounts, I believe she told me, for that this year. We are working towards hopefully giving more funds to the Sterilization Act through different ways for that. I've partnered with something called etcgeorgia.org, which is in the cycle, Georgia, founded by Monica Stevens, as well as Anne Marie Alba. She's the CEO and founder of the Georgia Companion Animal Advocacy Coalition, and they're both aware of my presence here today. Our main goal is points to gain the support and partnership of lobbyists and Congress to implement a pet food tax in order to achieve this funding goal. Our second most important goal is to then advertise and provide the resources to the general public and residents of Georgia about where they can go seek low-cost or low, I'm sorry, low-cost spay-neuter and vaccine sponsorship. We already have enough individuals who neglect and abuse or innocent animals, so money should not be one of the reasons we prevent good owners from being able to obtain vetting and spay-neuter for their animals.
I'm sorry, but your time is up, ma'am.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Can I give a sheet?
Yeah, give it to the officer. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and done, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is item number five, recommendation for award SWC twenty-four dash one oh two. This is presented by our Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. The request is for a recommendation of approval for using the statewide contract for twenty-four dash one zero two. This is consultant services, once again, for jail and court management system for the IT department. The recommendation is to utilize the statewide contract with Gardner, Inc., and they're located in Stanford, Connecticut, for the purchase of consultant services and the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Funding is available through the Information Technology Department's general fund, and the department recommendation and agreement are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman, his designate, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contract, and authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions?
I do. This consulting agreement, do they, I remember they had, what was it, SEJIS in place? Is it currently there? Or is it, and what is this consulting arrangement for?
So we did have SEJIS in place, a contract with Tyler Technology that you may refer to. So I'll certainly let our chief information officer respond to that.
Good evening. So to answer your question, this assessment, it's a twelve-week assessment for Gardner to come in place and do a needs assessment for the sheriff's office and the court offices for a jail management system and a court management system.
So for both, the jail and the courts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But two separate systems? Or is it the same system?
It could be the same. It could be more than one. That's the purpose of doing the assessment, so we evaluate the current needs.
And they're just doing a need assessment? They're not going to do any kind of requirements or documents as well?
They're going to do requirements and help assist with the RFP process.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, starting with item number eighteen.
Board appointments.
I'm sorry, board appointment, starting with item number eighteen.
All right, first, board appointments to the Solid Waste Management Authority. Rob Leatherwood, resign from Solid Waste Management Authority. Existing term will expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for board. Are there any recommendations? All right, continue to hold that, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Next board appointment is to Public Facilities Authority pursuant to the board's request adopted through resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. The General Assembly passed House Bill twelve forty-two, creating the Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. This authority- This authority may issue bonds for public projects such as improvements. The bill, the bill went into effect on May first. For the initial appointments, two members shall be appointed for a term of three years. Two members shall be appointed for a term of two years, and one member shall be appointed for a term of one year. And this is District One's recommendation. Do you have a recommendation for us?
Commissioner Reeves, just a reminder, this is for the two-year term.
Thank you. I would like to recommend for the two-year Public Facilities Authority, Mr. Hackland Devoe.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion and questions. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Kathy Robinson's term on the Board of Zoning Appeals expired August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. New term is for three years, expiring on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-seven, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? All right, continue to hold that, Madam Clerk. Next board appointment is to Code Enforcement. Latarcha's Paces' term on the Code Enforcement Board expired on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. New term is for three years, expiring on July sixteen, twenty twenty-seven, full board appointment. Any recommendations? Commissioner Reeves.
I have a recommendation from District One for Mr. Marvin Dixon.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Animal Control Board. Mila Chapman resigned from the Animal Control Board. The existing term expires on March twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? All right, continue to hold that as well, Madam Clerk.
Our next item is item number twenty-three, ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash one ninety-six. This is presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. Ordinance twenty-two forty-four one ninety-six is a, actually, an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Appendix A, zoning, Article One, Section one point five, defined words, and Article Four, special districts, by creating the hospital overlay district. And that is to clarify the standards for that hospital overlay district, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, to provide a repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and other purposes. This is a board-initiated item that requires a public hearing.
All right, at this time, this will be a public hearing on this matter. It's a request made by the Board of Commissioners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Go ahead, was that the one we were gonna take?
This is the one we're talking, we're speaking of holding?
Oh, okay.
Because there was a portion that we wanted to include within that hospital overlay, and Mr. Jiki wants to express why we should hold this for another month.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Late this afternoon, we were having a discussion about some parts of the, of this overlay. And in that conversation, there was an idea to expand the overlay, except that the expansion of the overlay conflicts with the LCI, or LCI study. Because of the LCI study, we decided to take a closer look at that overlay before we start amending the LCI. As you all know, the LCI was a grant we just received from ARC, and the study has completed on our part. So we wanted to make sure we're not running into any conflicts that could impinge on the intent of that study.
All right, thank you. What's your motion, Commissioner Davis?
I'd like to propose that we hold this motion, is to hold it until the September meeting.
What's the date?
We have to look at that one now. What's the September? Seventeen, until September seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-four, ordinance twenty-two forty-four dash one ninety-seven.
Ordinance twenty-two forty-four one ninety-seven is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance, specifically to amend the zoning ordinance, Article Three, Section three point one nine, MXI Mixed Use Commercial Industrial District Intent permitted uses and conditional uses, Section three point two zero MXI Mixed Use Commercial Industrial District Standards, and Section three point three six land use matrix to regulate the zoning use classification, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and for other purposes. Again, this is a board-initiated item which requires a public hearing.
All right, at this time, it's a public hearing in reference to this request by the Board of Commissioners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this board's request? Please come forward. Ma'am.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Casey Frew. I represent Mid-Hour Investments and Extension Distribution. I have been working with Stephen Jones on this matter. We really appreciate your time and energy spent on the amendment itself. And whereas we are in favor, we have several amendments that we would like to address prior to moving forward. Is there any chance we could share the presentation?
Was it given to us?
Yes. If not, it's okay, I can just talk to you too, whatever's easier. So.
Yes, do we have?
Okay. So first, both of our clients, we were here on June eighteenth. We were able to rezone this property to MXI in order to help assist in the uses that were already on site. One of the parcels accession is actually a nonprofit organization that works. Thank you. I have all the power. Okay, there we go. So it's a nonprofit that works to help individuals who are reentering society or who have not received the proper training to get jobs. And then Mid-Hour Investments owns a parcel right in front of it, and they have worked really hard to redo this area, invest a lot of money and time, and it has become an economic hot point that's been beneficial for the community as a whole. So the first item I would like to address, tell me I'm crazy, okay, there we go, is the Transportation Overlay District. We are the violet two large parcels right there. Currently, even though we've worked really hard to get the MXI approved, the way that the Transportation Overlay District is written inside the ordinance, well, it will take precedence over the actual MXI zoning stance. And then it's on there, it stays, the standards and requirements of the overlay district shall govern in any case where standards and requirements of the overlay district conflict with those of the base zoning ordinance, including other applicable county codes. And with all of the work that's been put in this with staff and Commissioner Hambrik to allow this to stay in place, it would make all of this effort futile. So we are asking that the MXI zoning becomes an exception to this rule, or there is a floor amendment allowing for MXI to take precedence over the Transportation Overlay District. I think, I think it just hates me, to be fair. There we go, I apologize. Yeah, so we would love a floor amendment that the MXI properties are not subject to the TOD. This, this would be problematic for multiple reasons. Zoning would not control anymore, creates administrative hurdles, and the uses of this differ from the MXI itself. So some of the uses that we have worked really hard to implement in this area and that are in the amendment as it stands are not in the transportation overlay. So we, we request that there be an amendment for the MXI district or zone. Next, there are several conflicts within the MXI amendment itself. The first one is auto engine body repair and undercoating shops are not permitted in the current matrix. However, if you look at Mid-Hour Investments, the actual property itself, a large portion of the tenants there actually work in this industry, and this would be detrimental to them and everyone who lives in Clayton County and works there. Chemical storage and manufacturing, currently, we, we don't have someone who is manufacturing chemicals. However, we do have someone involved in the auto industry where they store and organize essentially oil within and then distribute out. So we ask that you make a floor amendment, allowing this to be changed to conditional or permitted use in order to give you the power to decide, at least in conditional, if you would like those businesses and tenants to stay there. And that allows us to actually make a point for each and every one of them moving forward. The next would be in the conditional use section, automotive repair, automotive repairs and tire shops are included in the chart on top of the amendment. However, it's not included in the matrix as a conditional use. Again, automotive repair within these two parcels is really important, and we ask that you make a floor amendment allowing this to be a permitted use. Or if not a permitted use, allow us to make it consistent where we would have conditional throughout the matrix and the chart. The last section that we will look at, and then I'll leave you all alone, is the permitted uses section. Currently, dental offices are within the matrix itself, not within the chart as permitted. Parking garages, decks, and lots are within the matrix as permitted, not within the chart, and trade shops as well. So if we could request, we ask that you amend so that way these are consistent throughout the actual amendment instead of differing. The last thing I will ask is that for all of the conditional permits, we are requesting a blanket conditional use permit instead of bringing in, I believe, thirty, forty different applications for conditional use, and that will save the county itself time as well as our clients' money and expense going towards this instead of their businesses and making the community better itself. I'm done. I'm gonna let you, I'll let you be, and I'll stop playing with the remote.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
We are still in a public hearing. There's about four minutes left. If, if there's anyone that'd like to speak in favor of the request, anyone in favor of? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Hambrik, can I have what you'd like to move?
Well, I need to hear from staff about this. Were these things discussed previously, or what's your recommendation?
Yes, Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners. We've had an extensive conversation about MXI. I've met with the, with the last speaker and their client about this. How it started was, we had a meeting where we invited people who do business with us to come talk about how we can improve MXI classification. Our preview, our current MXI is a bundled MXI. It has GB, ORI, and LI in it. In implemented, in implementation, sometimes they conflict. So we unbundled, that's how we started, we unbundled MXI to stand, that's on its own. Also, in the comp plan, in order to address some of the housing issues in the county, we introduced an element of, we introduced a residential element in MXI because the uses in MXI that are ally are not such that are environmentally impactful to MXI areas. So we introduced residential, which is one of the tools we are using to increase housing because by introducing housing, we have mixed use in MXI. So what we did to accommodate, what you heard is specific to a parcel, and we do not write code specific to a parcel. It's specific to what parcel, what we did is, the notion we were discussing was to make the subordinate, the TOD, our transport that's oriented development, which, one of the tools we are using so far, we're working with Marder and all our planning agencies in the metro, was to have the TOD overlay to increase mixed use and housing in the county. So how we solved some of the issues that we are raising, we actually solved most of the issues they were raising, was to create some of the uses, put them under conditional use category so that it will come to the board, so that they're not outright, outright, that's permitted. And that's how we designed it to safeguard some of the uses that are in the area. But in general, it is a one parcel issue or two against the rest of, because the changes we make there will be spread across the whole county. And that is the issue we're having.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering why we haven't had this discussion, because we met before, I've met at the location, which is different, and all in there, I'm, I'm not even sure how many businesses are included.
Two, two issues. We solved the issues I met with you on. The issues we, we met on was, when we were doing the TOD, and some of the issues that we're having started from a business license issue.
Right.
Then we went in there and cleaned up the business licenses. There were some businesses in the area that haven't had licenses in a while. So we started, said, okay, those businesses have been there in a while, and stuff, we figured out a way to clean those up. While we were having that discussion in cleaning it up, the TOD came. In order not to negate the conversations we were having with you as a district commissioner, that's where we created the conditional use permit to accommodate those things, so that we don't go back on what we said to you. But what you're hearing is that to reduce, there are gonna be a conflict if we do exactly what the, what you just heard. Because it will apply to all MXIs in the county.
I think we need further discussion.
Yes, I would suggest that, because I think that some of the details that we might want to share with you might require that we table this and make sure that all, all involved really understand what we're doing, because we solved ninety-five percent of our issues. To unbundle MXI and make our MXI be more tailored to what we are doing in the comprehensive plan that's update. And other thing I'll say is, when we plan, we're not planning off what is right now, we're planning for the future.
Madam Commissioner, Hambrik?
Yes.
Okay. I've read through it, and I, I like what's here. I am not in favor of giving anyone a blanket, any type of blanket adoption for what they want on this agenda or on any bill. And why is because while we are seeking to control and to clean up our community, we relinquish control in holding those in order. So that's where I am with it. I just think we've got to, we've got to make some hard and fast decisions. So, that's where I am with it. I just think we've got to, we've got to make some hard and fast decisions. We don't want to lose Clayton County totally. And I think for us to have a, an ordinance like this does us well in moving forward.
Mr. Commissioner Davis, have you visited the site?
Over that, that way, I've visited that whole corridor right there. Yes, ma'am. But I have it, the one right there off eighty-five and South Garden Walk. Is that the correct one we're speaking about? Yeah.
So, what is your recommendation?
Commissioner, if you'll permit me, I'll recommend or suggest that we table it and come back and have a bigger discussion so that we will have explained in a different way what we're talking about and kind of connect it to the rest of the things that we're doing in the county.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
You wanted to respond?
This is something totally different.
Thank you. My response would be, and I'll keep it very short. If we spend all this time and energy to unbundle the MXI, we should not allow for the TOD to take precedence over it, completely undoing that work. And whereas we're stating that this is relevant to our parcel, right, in this instance, I doubt it's the only parcel inside of Clayton County where MXI and the TOD are going to conflict. And that issue in and of itself will continue to present itself if it's not addressed.
So, are you agreeing to table for further discussions?
Do they have to? Well, they don't have to agree to table it, do they? They didn't bring this to us. That's why she's asking.
Yeah.
Would you like to table it, ma'am, until next month? Or would you want her to make a decision?
Yes, sir.
It's the board's.
It's the board, yeah.
It's the board's initiation.
That's right.
Yeah, well, I still want, well, because we've been working closely with them. So, I would like to have your opinion. Well, I mean, is table or?
Well, it's your decision whether you want to table it.
I know it's my decision, but that will help me make my decision.
I understand. I think if we're in a situation where it's either approve without further amendments that don't address the TOD issue, I think we should table it. If this is something that we can work through today, then not to table it. But I look to you for guidance on that because...
Well, I can't recommend today, not with what I've heard tonight. So, I would recommend table. Uh, wait, hold on, G.G.K.?
I'd like to clarify something. This is an isolated incident. Really, would you have where this is occurring? And the TOD effort, the, the work we did with MODO sends the wrong message to the regional partners that we're working with. So, I just want to clarify, when we hear these points made, that it will do all the work that was, was done. We, the, we, the staff are the ones who did all the work. And we, we came with the, with the solution we came up with. I'm not opposed to tabling it and hearing for that, for them to explain further and for me to explain further what we're doing.
Somebody explain to me.
Okay. The, the issue is, we want to be consistent with where we want the county to go. Our land use, the TOD is an opportunity to increase density and create livable communities. Yes, ma'am.
So, do we want to table or not?
No, if it's your wish, I would agree to it.
It's up to you.
It's up to you, yeah.
It's my wish.
Okay.
And then we can discuss all of this.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just sharing the bigger picture.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, what's your motion?
Uh, my motion is to table.
Table what day? September?
Seventeenth.
Two months or what?
Uh, well, we should, uh, just one month.
September, what's the date?
Seventeenth, September seventeenth.
Is that your motion?
Uh, hold on. Let me check with staff.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah.
That's workable?
Oh, yeah.
All right. The motion is to table till September seventeenth. Is there a second? I'll suck in the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Our next item on the agenda is item number twenty-five, ordinance twenty-two-four dash one ninety-eight.
Ordinance twenty-two-four one ninety-eight is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County ordinance specifically to amend the official code of Clayton County, Georgia, specifically to amend Appendix A, Article Four, Special Districts, to add a new Section four point one one zero entitled Business Corridor Overlay District to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and for other purposes. Again, this is a board-initiated item that requires a public hearing.
This time it's a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this board's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right. Well, at this time, is there a motion to approve this, this item? What I'm looking for? Number twenty-five. I'll make the motion to approve. Oh, you got some extra.
All right. Good evening, chairman and board members. Um, just to make a quick clarification in, in regards to the schedule, I mean, the agenda that you all have. Uh, item twenty-five is also shows, uh, associated with item number thirty-three. So, the text amendment is twenty-five and the map that's associated with that is item thirty-three. So, the items that are going to be taken into action will need to be applicable to both. Sorry, not, not for both, but they were supposed to be heard back to back. One is the text amendment and the other one is the map amendment.
No.
Okay. So, I'll, per advisement, we'll, I'll retract that statement that you all would hear this and then you'll hear the map amendment later on. So, just excuse that coming.
You yield the legal. I got you.
That's correct.
All right. I made the motions. There's a second. Second. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Item twenty-six is BLC twenty-three-ten zero-three-six, which is the three-six-four, excuse me, which is to amend the zoning map by establishing the boundaries of the hospital overlay district given the board's tabling of item twenty-three. I believe my recommendation that you table this as well to the seventeen, September seventeenth.
All right. I'll place that in form of motion to table this till September seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, just a point of information. Would you want to take the vote for item thirty-three or now?
No, we'll take it in order.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay. Our next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. Each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must survive their time in order to complete the full presentation within the ten minutes. When the time runs out, the speaker will be, will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first. Applicants in zoning, zoning, zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first zoning hearing that is not board-initiated will be item number twenty-seven. This is BLC twenty-three-eleven dash zero-three-seven-zero, which is to amend the future land use map.
Good evening, Chairman and board members, Commissioners. Tyler McSwain representing the Planning and Zoning Community Development Department. This item for item twenty-seven, just note that twenty-seven and twenty-eight are companion cases. Uh, this was a request for, on behalf of Battle Law, for the properties mentioned for seventy-two-eighty-six, seventy-two-ninety-four, seventy-three-twenty-six and seventy-three-thirty, Mount Sinai Boulevard in Jonesboro, Georgia, for rezoning requests and the future land use map amendment. Uh, staff did receive a formal notice from the applicant to table this matter until the next hearing, which will be in September. And that would be the September seventeenth BLC.
Correct. Commissioner Davis, how would you like to proceed? Move that we accept that request to table items twenty-seven and twenty-eight until September seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-nine. And that item on the agenda would be BLC twenty-four zero-one dash zero-three-eight-seven, which would be a conditional use permit.
Okay. This item is a conditional use request. Sorry about that. Again, this is the conditional use request for Luck Real Estate Ventures for a CUP. I believe that this item was a for request that was withdrawn or request to withdraw this request. That was the note provided to staff regarding this item.
Who's that on? Commissioner Hambrick.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Except.
Yes.
That withdrew it.
You said it's to withdraw. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
Well, I will that we withdraw BLC twenty-four-zero-one dash zero-three-eight-seven, CUP.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item on the agenda is item number thirty. BLC twenty-four-zero-one dash zero-three-nine-two to rezone.
Okay. I believe we're on item thirty, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, for item thirty, I just want to make a note in terms of the order that item number thirty-one is the future land use map amendment. And in order that we would need to hear thirty-one before thirty, so we would need to switch or swap. Those are the consideration for that one.
Please proceed.
Okay. Uh, so, BLC two-four-zero-one zero-three-nine-three is a future land use map request for again twenty-six-thirty-one Rex Road. This is associated with the rezoning request, but the future land use map request is to amend general commercial to medium density for a town home development, again, located on Rex Road. Uh, staff did receive a note to table this matter for item number thirty-one, which is a future land use map amendment to the September hearing. And I believe the applicant is here.
If we table thirty-one, then wouldn't that have to, thirty would have to be tabled as well?
Okay. Sorry about that. So, the request, I was gonna read the recommendation. I was gonna put the, the table, so I will retract the table statement because the applicant is here and they will mention that they're gonna do that. I haven't received a formal notice on that, so I'm gonna put that for the record. So, again, item thirty-one, that is the future land, land use map amendment request. Staff's recommendation was denial and the Zone Advisory Group voted to deny this request as well. And the reasoning being is that the county is requesting that we preserve the amount of commercial developments that we have left. It does not comply with the comprehensive plan. And that is the recommendation from staff and also favorable recommendation from the Zone Advisory Group. And the applicant is here to represent the project as well.
Mr. Azar.
I didn't know you had this planned, so I want, I want to use the Chairman Turner, Commissioner Reeves, wherever you are, Commissioner Hambrick, Commissioner Davis. I hope I don't make this too confusing because...
I'm sorry to cut you off. How many minutes would you like to reserve for rebuttal if someone should be in opposition?
One minute.
One minute, okay. Please proceed. And did you state your name for us? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Did you state your name for us?
Oh, John Azar College Park. I had the opportunity to talk to Commissioner Reeves at the site last week. I know that she was in a hurry to get out of town. So, we had about a thirty-minute meeting out there, explaining to her exactly what we wanted to do. She wanted, one of the priorities she had was a fresh fruit and vegetable stand. And I misunderstood her. I thought she was talking about inside the convenient food store that is under construction out there. So, I'm gonna intertwine this zoning with the, the construction of the convenient food store because I'm adding some things, some restrictions on her behalf that I think you'll like and she'll like. First of all, it's only, we're only asking for forty-seven units townhouses. Price range is gonna be two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Square footage is gonna be eighteen-hundred square feet to twenty-two-hundred square feet. So, the size and the price will be over what the adjoining neighborhood is. So, it should appreciate the value of those homes that, that are joining this property. All the units are gonna have garages. Some of them gonna have two garages because twenty-two-hundred square feet is a big unit. All the sidewalks will be ADA compliant and there'll be sidewalks all through this development. Also sidewalks connecting to Rex Road and the sidewalk connecting to Mount Sinai Boulevard. Construction's gonna be brick on the front, combination of brick and hardy plank on the side. Here's what we, we want to do to entice your, your vote for this thing. We want to tell you that we'll restrict or we'll add as a condition in the convenient food store, a work, inside workstation next to a coffee bar so the community will have access to a place they can bring their computers in, sit down, drink a cup of coffee or whatever and, and enjoy themselves and do work in this store. We'll also provide one outside with a shed so, with tables so they'll, they'll have a workstation inside and outside this community, this, this store. I don't know if the, the security system was talked about when they rezoned this front property for commercial, but they're willing to tie it in directly to the Clayton County Police Department. The lighting system will be what they call dark sky compliant, which means that the light will be focused down to the ground, not all over the neighborhood. The most important thing, and I think Commissioner Reeves would really like this, is we're gonna set aside an area for fresh food and vegetable stand. We have a dog park planned, but we'll reduce the size of that dog park so that if someone wants to put fresh food and vegetables out there, they'll have a place to do that.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We got five minutes left for anybody who would like to speak in favor of petitioner's request. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Mr. Garber? Mr. Azar?
Yes, sir. Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. With all due respect to Mr. Azar, I've known for many years. My reason for denying this situat, this building is... My reason for denying this situat- this building is not just in his area, but it's throughout the county. And the reason that I'm going to give for denial is Clayton County has gone through a great redoing of our public schools, but no expansion of our public schools. And let me remind this board that that this housing will bring in more people. And let me remind the board that the schools opened this year with two-hundred teachers openings that weren't available. Now you're bringing in more people and more children? Who's going to teach them? You've got to get it together with the expansion and education. That's all I've got to say. Thank you, Mr. Azar.
Does anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else opposed? Mr. Azar, you got one minute for a rebuttal if you should choose to.
I want to take yours.
You're good? All right. Commissioner Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Azar, for that for that presentation. Um, I believe that uh I went out, uh, like you said, we we went out together and looked at um the area, the intersection of Mount Zion and Rex Road, and to have multifamily housing with amenities such as a space where folks can buy uh fresh fruits and produce um to to help um mitigate the area as a food desert, but also have a community space where people can go to in the adjoining uh development with the um, I believe it's a a gas station and a couple of um convenience stores. So um, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
What's your recommendation?
Uh, my recommendation? I'm sorry, repeat the question?
Your recommendation, approval or denial?
Approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Azar, don't go too far. You got one more item.
All right. Thank you for that. So the next item that we hear is the uh, you just voted on the future land use map amendment request. The next item is uh item thirty, which is the rezoning, so that's B O C two-four zero-one zero-three nine-two, again from L G A Engineering at twenty-six thirty-one Rex Road in Ellwood, Georgia. Uh, staff's recommendation, um, follow suit of the future land use map amendment for recommendation of denial. The zoning advisory group recommended denial of the rezoning and the reasoning being that they wanted to preserve the commercial footprint that is existing in the area and that the disuse would take away from that commercial uh footprint, which is not in compliance with the uh comprehensive plan currently. Um, that is staff's recommendation and the zoning advisory group's recommendation for this request as well.
Thank you. Mr. Azar.
I might have got confused. I thought I'd made a presentation. Did I do the wrong presentation?
No, no. It's your your ten minutes unless you want to reserve another one for a minute. And anything you want to tell us about the uh rezoning uh request, then feel free. And if you're good?
I'm good.
Don't let us pressure you. All right. All right, at this time, it's a public hearing on this matter. If anybody would like to speak in favor of, please come forward. Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? One more time, Mr. Garber, come on.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my my statement stands as before about the education. But let me bring up one other thing before I leave the podium. You've got two boards here that recommended denial. What use are your boards if you're going to go against them? Thank you.
Any others? Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? All right, Commissioner Reeves.
Very comments, Mr. Garber. And I will take note um of those items, but I would like to approve this rezoning from general uh business to single-family residential attached townhomes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. Is there any? What's the plan for rental of these properties? Are these rental or ownership?
No, these are for sale.
For sale only? Okay, and that's put into the record as well? Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Our next item on the agenda is item number thirty-two. B O C twenty-four zero-five dash zero-four eleven, which is for a conditional use permit.
All right. So the next request again as stated is the conditional use uh request for A E R Logistics Incorporated for a conditional use for warehouse at thirty-seventy-five South Park Boulevard in Ellwood, Georgia. Uh, the property is currently zoned heavy industrial. Um, the subject property, the subject property was developed um prior to the most recent requirements for uh warehousing to include a conditional use permit. Um, so in the process of the ownership change, um, they were notified that this process would be required. Um, so in doing so, staff um acknowledges that this area um in South Park is um majority uh reserved for warehousing and industrial uses. Um, the existing building will remain the same as the new tenant will come over and take over that request. Uh, in consideration with this request, staff recommendation was to approve um the request. Um, the zoning advisory gr- group recommended to deny um this request um due to concerns that may be detrimental to the general welfare of the community. Um, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff and the applicant is here also um to give a little bit more information on their operations as well.
All right, applicant present. Please state your name for us and if you want to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal, should somebody be opposed to you.
Hello, dear Commissioner. My name is Summer. I'm standing from here for my company, A R Logistics Inc. Uh, we are only a warehouse and when we renting the warehouse, we do not know that it's a heavy industrial, so we have no idea about it. But we we are only shipping and the storage. We do not do any manufacture. It's nothing related to public safety or health. Uh, and we have give ma- many working chance to our labors and we are the leading warehouse in U S. We have a warehouse in New Jersey, in California, in Savannah and Houston, and we will have a new warehouse in Brenton. So uh we are doing very safe. We only sh- uh shipping and the storage. We do not do anything manufacturer. So there we only require this C C U P to have our business license, that's it. Please give us approval. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to come forth and speak in favor of petitioner's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Reeves.
For for that presentation, um, I would like to get um to to sit down and talk with you more um about about the warehouse and uh to ask, you know, if you've met with the with the community for for this development. And uh Chair, is it? Could I use this time to table until the September meeting?
Yes, if that's your request, then uh your motion rather, you can table until September seventeenth if the applicant is willing to uh table. Are you willing to table this until September seventeenth's meeting? The district commissioner wants to sit down and have further discussion
Okay.
with with the company.
So September seventeenth?
Yes.
Uh, what time?
The same time as now.
Here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Do you have questions, Commissioner?
Well, I I think you're confused about a meeting with the commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
Time, right.
Oh, okay, yeah. The next time we will take this up for approval will be September seventeenth.
Okay.
The district commissioner, you need to tell the company to reach out to her office and schedule a time for them to meet with her.
Oh.
Because she wants to get additional information before making a final decision.
Okay, so we need to schedule a meeting with the this commissioner?
Yes, ma'am. Prior prior to September seventeen.
Oh, I see. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, you didn't do your motion? Do your motion.
Uh, I'd like to um make a motion to table uh agenda item thirty-two, uh B O C two-four oh-five dash oh-four one-one.
Until? Until September seventeen?
Till September seventeen.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item on the agenda is item number thirty-three. B O C twenty-four oh-five dash zero-four one-six. Which is the board of the commissioners initiated amendment to the zoning map.
Okay. So again, this is the board initiated item to amend the uh official Clayton County zoning map to include the boundaries of newly established business corridor overlay district. Um, and again, this is association with the text amendment. And the purpose of this request is to establish um a specific corridor and overlay that one restricts the certain uses within the commercial zone properties along the major corridors uh within Clayton County. Um, the reason why this is used in District Four is mainly because, one, that the cord major corridors, including Terra Boulevard, Highway one-thirty-eight, and other major uh arterials are located within District Four. So the map amendment of this request will include the uh adoption of the map that you're seeing, including the parcels grabbed from the selected um roads that are used in this G I S map. So the parcels that are adjacent or located on this corridor are will be the properties that will be subject to um the business overlay. So again, the purpose is to help identify those parcels or properties that are going to be involved in this overlay and to establish the areas that will be used on our maps for county initiated items as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to this specific map amendment.
All right, well, this is a public hearing. Is there one, anyone here? This is board of commissioners initiated uh amendment or requests. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? This is in District Four, so is there recommendation from District Four?
Yes. I uh move that we approve B O C twenty-four zero-five dash zero-four one-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next, our next item on the agenda is item number thirty-four, which is a conditional use permit for B O C twenty-four zero-five dash zero-four two-one.
Okay. The next quest again, as mentioned, is a conditional use request for we consider as a A D U accessory dwelling unit. Um, the applicant uh for this request is Jessica Head. Um, the family did mention or come up here before you all earlier to speak on the request. They are located at seventy-two thirty-seven Cherokee Court and it is zoned R S one-eighty. And within the R S one-eighty zoning district, it is required that any resident or owner who wishes to have a an additional living space attached through or detached will have to come before this board and and receive a conditional use permit. Um, staff recognizes that the the building area which they're proposing uh will comply. And with those, with staff's recommendation, staff did recommend approval with conditions, and I'll read those conditions for the record. Um, there are three conditions that is tied to this request. One, uh architectural plan shall include a minimum of three-foot uh high brick water table on a proposed addition, and that is a requirement in terms of the architectural requirements in the county code. Um, I do want to mention that staff would like to strike condition number two as is the parking requirements are listed in the code, so they will still be required to comply with those regulations. So there will be two conditions forwarded to you all. So the last condition would be that the proposed accessory dwelling unit may not be used as a rental. Just want to note here that the zoning advisory group also recommended um approval uh with the conditions as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff and applicant is here as well.
Yes, I do have a question. How will we know uh condition number? Well, it's really number two now, but how will we know that? The uh may not be used as a rental.
But that was a condition that was rendered by the zoning advisory group.
Honor system.
The county does have uh a short rental um guideline, so if they are doing something and trying to come into compliance, we'll have to check that way, but code enforcement will have to be notified that they're doing something that's not complying with the code.
And and it's not just on this request. I mean, I've seen this before and I'm wondering how do we monitor that?
Right. Hard to do that.
It is, I will agree.
It's something to think about.
If the applicant, please come forward. State your name for me and if you would like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal, should somebody be opposed to you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jessica Head from seventy-two thirty-seven Cherokee Court. I would like to leave five minutes for a rebuttal. So um as we mentioned before earlier, we already have it in the architectural plans that there is a minimum three-foot water table. Um, that was already planned out on the plan, so that condition will be able to be met. In regards to the rental property, as far as proposing saying that um we would use it as a rental property, that is not my intention. It's just for my parents to make sure that they have a place to stay of their own. And my father's here as well. He has additional comments in regards to that.
Sure. Warren Seahed, Junior, seventy-two thirty-seven Cherokee Court. Now, in reference, Commissioner, to the rental aspect, I have spent approximately eighty-thousand dollars to date. Sixty-four thousand dollars with the contractor and another twenty thousand for the application just getting this stuff done. The contractor himself came down and told us he didn't sign up for that, but that was in his contract. This property is for my wife and my for myself. It's not for anybody else. Now, the other aspect is, is that when we're gone, she gets it all. I could have bought another house easily. Like I said, we moved down here two years ago to help her. I sold a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house that I had been in for twenty-something years, right in the heart of Atlanta. And I did that because I wanted to be down there to help her. That's the purpose. We will not be renting anything, I can assure you. That's what the purpose is. I would not have invested a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars in this property if I was going to rent it out to someone and not be there.
And like I said before, it's not.
No, I I totally.
Right, I'm just saying, we get this from time to time.
I understand.
I wonder how do we monitor that?
I I totally understand where you're coming from, and I can assure you, with the kind of money that my wife and I have already spent, we have no intention of allowing anybody else to come into that property.
Very nice property.
Believe me. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here like to speak in favor of applicant's petition?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. At, all the times you look at the television and you hear about war in Ukraine and Russia, you hear about war in Israel and, and Gaza, and you hear about humanitarianism. And that seems so far away and removed from us. But now, at our door comes a humanitarian aspect to our daily lives. This is a father and a daughter who want to raise a child and look after this child in a way that other, other children don't have. They don't have a mother and a father. They don't have a grandparent, but these people do. And you have to look at this humanitarian aspect in our lives and think of what they're trying to do. Now, Ms. Hambrick, you wanted to put a condition on this, and how will you monitor it? You write down there at the bottom that this property, which is well-described, be only used by immediate family members, preferably grandparents. It, it's a, a unit of property for them to cohabitate as a family together. That's the humanitarian aspect you have to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Come forth, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Julius Small, Junior. I live in District Two. I've been living there since nineteen ninety-one, when I retired out of the military. I got the letter, and I'm sorry, I missed the first meeting on the fifth of August, but at my age, I spend more time going to the doctor's office or in the hospital. Matter of fact, just got out today. My concern, because I'm right across the street from this address, I'm at eighteen forty-five Cherokee Way. And I don't fully understand what accessory dwelling unit is all about, and I see the approval with condition, and I see at the bottom the exception. But what, what, what are we trying to build in a residential area? When I bought my house in nineteen ninety-one, and I went to several counties in Georgia, and I decided to stay in Clayton County, and it was all residential at that time. Now, with the code changing, how would that affect the total residential area for those people who've been living there all these years and decided to settle in a residential area?
And let me say that.
Still residential. It's not changing from residential.
Not changing anything.
No, sir.
But this building, what type of building would that be? That's what I'm trying to get.
It's not a building, it's a, if I'm correct, eight-hundred square feet addition to the house. It's just like if you were to build a sunroom on the back of your house.
And a building onto the house.
Onto the main house. Is it the main house, or is it a separate building? It's on the main house.
Okay, because I'm right across the street from it, and, and I don't have any problem with someone adding to the house.
Just adding to the house.
Concern about a building being put up in the community, and what would that building be used for?
No, it's residential.
Totally, totally something different.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Uh, you've got about twenty seconds. It's okay. Hold on, hold on a second, sir, you'll have time for rebuttal, so don't go anywhere. Uh, anybody in, in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, sir, five, you've got five minutes as a rebuttal, please come.
Again, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. Uh, to all the residents, all of our neighbors, this is going to be a addition to the existing home. When you come down Cherokee Way, my daughter's lot is a corner lot. So, basically, this unit will be in the backyard. The existing backyard situation will not change other than that in-law suite coming off the back of the garage. That's basically going to be it. There will not be a significant change to the lot itself. That includes flow of water, anything. It will not affect any resident other than my daughter's property. So it's, it's not going to change anything. As far as the neighborhood, we will be, at some time, putting up a privacy fence as well, because we do have a dog. But at the same time, when you look at that property, it will not change any effect as far as how that house looks other than enhancing the look of it and giving additional living space.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, I recommend that we approve, uh, BLC dash two-four zero-five dash zero-four two-one, or CUP.
With the condition?
With the, with the two conditions.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Chairman. First, first of all, I'd like to say you need to give your daddy a hug. That man coming to you like that. And also, too, Chairman, this is, this, I'd like to point something out, and I want to say congratulations on your new granddaughter born two days ago.
Aw, shucks, he didn't have to say all that.
But do you, but do you see what they do to you? I just wanted to point that out.
I got you, I got you.
But all your boys, you see, you got that little girl.
All right. Okay, can we continue on now?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, congratulations to you, granddad. Our next item on the agenda is item number thirty-five, BLC twenty-four oh-five dash zero-four two-eight.
All right, so this is a modification request. This petition had a rezoning and future land use map amendment that was moved through this board and commissioned to, for approval with conditions. The reason why the applicant is coming back for the modification is that they have acquired land, and they are adjusting the access point on Ran Road for the proper infrastructure improvements, and also for a D-cell lane. And during this modification, what we consider as a major modification, the applicant now has to modify the conditions of the approval from the rezoning of the PUD. Again, this is property that's located within District Four, located on Ran Road, and this is for a residential subdivision that has both single-family detached and attached townhomes. So again, I will read the conditions that are impacted by this request. Okay, for the record, so one, the first approved condition that development shall, excuse me, include no more than twenty-one detached units and seventy-four attached single-family townhomes. All lots shall be fee simple. Condition number two, all front yards to be sotted. Three, both attached and detached home products shall be constructed at the same time. Condition number four, all amenity areas shall be constructed prior to forty percent of completion of the homes. The parcels mentioned with the collection of properties shall be combined prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. Condition number six, all architectural plans to be approved as part of a plan book submitted to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. Condition number seven, one trash pickup service shall be provided for the entire development. Condition number eight, and this would have been impacted by the modification as well, a tree line is to be provided along forty-one, lots forty-one and forty-two, which are the in-units, as a buffer to the power line easement. A tree line is to be provided along lots sixty-one and sixty-two as a buffer for the power line easement pursuant to the written permission from the Georgia Power Company. In accordance with section three, excuse me, six-point-three-four of the Clayton County Code of Ordinance, which is the buffer requirements for residential developments. Condition number nine, an addition of four parking spaces shall be added near the northwest of Pavilion cul-de-sac. And condition number ten, north and east conditions shall remain undisturbed. New tree line planting will be permitted. Just wanted to note that condition number eleven was recommended by ZAG, and that was agreement by the petitioner that all patios will be covered. And staff will also entertain that if a motion was to be made that we include the sidewalk requirements for the development, if there is a minimum of six feet wide sidewalks for the development. And that will include all the conditions related to this petition, which is twelve condition. And again, staff's recommendation was approval. The Zone Advisory Group recommendation was approval as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Petitioner present. State your name and any minutes for a rebuttal.
Yes, sir, Dani Blumenthal with Gaskins, Zaccrell, twelve, uh, twelve-sixty-six Powder Springs Road in Marietta. And I'd like to reserve four minutes for rebuttal.
Please proceed.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to talk about seventy-nine forty and seventy-nine forty-two Ran Road and twenty-four twenty-seven Highway one-thirty-eight. My client, Dr. Horton, is seeking a zoning modification for BLC twenty-three oh-six dash zero-three one-seven, which, which you all approved in March, March nineteenth of this year. The request is to modify the site plan to meet subdivision access requirements. The subject property is, uh, all right, I guess I don't have the PowerPoint here, that's all right. It's a, partially in a Georgia Power easement. Yeah, right there where the yellow star is, and it's just north of Clayton County International Park. It's currently zoned PUD with a future land use of high-density residential. So it is consistent with the zoning and land use. Um, this, the next slide here, I believe, yeah, this is the site plan that was approved in March. The plan shows ninety-five lots being seventy-four single-family attached and twenty-one single-family detached lots. And I'd like to note the location of the subdivision access in the lower-left or southwest corner of the site. And the next slide is the proposed site plan amendment. You can see the site access shifted north, still on Ran Road. The remainder of the site layout is largely the same as what was already approved, still with the same number of lots, single-family detached and single-family attached. The next slide will go through the specific tweaks to the, the two, from the approved plan to this current plan. But I just want to explain quickly why we're requesting this. So Clayton County Department of Transportation is requiring a two-hundred-foot right turn deceleration lane on Ran Road, which was deemed warranted by a traffic impact study, which is based on GDOT standards. The approved plan was designed with the assumption that we'd be able to acquire the necessary amount of right-of-way south of where that original access was shown. But my client was unable to reach the owners of that property, unfortunately, but were able to get some property under contract just north of where the original access for the approved site plan. So this amended site plan is just utilizing some additional frontage for, for right-of-way only, not anything else besides that shifted access. In having, uh, so yeah, in having that additional property, we're able to shift the access and meet the, the standards of the GDOT, or that were, was warranted by the GDOT standard traffic impact study, and by recommendation of the Department of Transportation. So this new plan, that was the main shift there, the main change, and it's meeting all entrance improvement requirements as it currently is. So this plan on the screen here just highlights the changes made from the approved plan. First, the access shifted north approximately two-hundred fifty, or seventy-five feet further away from the intersection of one-thirty-eight and Ran Road. Also, the southern internal road was realigned slightly, and the mail kiosk shifted left due to the entrance relocation. And further, four guest parking spaces were added in the top-left corner, and that was just to meet a zoning condition of the rezoning. And we're showing all walking trails to be concrete, which was also a condition of the rezoning. This newly proposed plan does not alter the density or buffers of the approved plan, and it meets all the requirements of the PUD zoning district applicable zoning can, and applicable zoning conditions. We're in agreement with all of staff-recommended conditions, except with two minor changes. One is that zoning condition number eleven, we just request that that's amended to say that there will be an option for patios to be covered for all the home buyers of the single-family detached lots, but as an option for them to purchase, you know, when, when the home is under construction. And then the other was the, the width, the six-foot width of the sidewalks. What we had discussed was having the sidewalk six feet on the property frontage. But I believe they're shown as five feet internally, and that's what's shown on the, the current plan here, and then the preliminary plot, which will be up for a vote from the zoning advisory group this coming Monday. But at this time, besides those changes, you know, we're happy to agree to all the other staff-recommended conditions, and thank you for your time, and I ask that you please approve this zoning modification. Thank you.
I do have one question. You said some, something to the effect that your company sought out to buy some property.
Just for the right-of-way.
And you could not contact that property owner.
Yes, sir.
So you brought, you bought additional?
Yeah, so it's, it's just a different property, so.
Located in a different location.
Yes, sir, so it's just a portion of that O and I property there. It's literally, it's just the width of the right-of-way. So that will be split into two O and I conforming properties that meet all the standards of an O and I parcel. But they'll be separate parcels from this request.
Okay, well, she, uh, there's no more time left for those who would like to speak in favor. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in opposition to, please come forth. Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Members of the board.
I'm sorry, sir, set timer for ten minutes. Go ahead.
I got ten minutes?
No, technically, but let somebody else speak, don't be us.
Okay. Yes, sir. I am not so much opposed to growth. I don't want y'all to think that I'm coming up here opposing all growth. But you have to be mindful of how many people you're putting in here and education. That, that's what I'm trying to bring forward here. And to you, Commissioner Hambrick, I don't want to embarrass myself, nor embarrass you, ma'am, but you questioned these other people, how would they know if they're related or not? How would they keep up with it? Well, you got these townhomes here that are fee simple, that I understand, that are owned. How are you going to monitor them? That once somebody buys them, that they're not rented out? Now, I mean, it's a double-edged sword you're presenting to one person and not applying it to another. Thank you, members of the board.
And, and let me just say this, Mr. Garber, for your edification. Every time we, we have a project or development, the school system is in discussions with us for those, for that project. So they are asked that question. What's the plan for the expansion to the school system when you have additional kids moving into the county? So they are part of those discussions, too. And according to them, they can handle it, and also to correct you on your two-hundred, I was told by superintendent that that was a misinformation. a misinformation in reference to the need that we need, we are two-hundred teachers short. So that's not the fact, but I'm just sharing you with what he told me.
Uh, well, you know, a half-truth, Mr. Chairman, is also a half-lie. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Come on, come on, come on.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Rita Hardy. The property that, um, of this proposed site, and it's a beautiful site, they've done a lot of work on it. However, the part, the portion of the property that aligns with Highway one thirty-eight, that is my family's property. My family has been in Clayton County for over the past hundred and twenty-some-odd years. And, um, the property was inherited by my father from my great uncle, Robert Sewell, and my great-aunt, Auntie Oteel Slaughter Sewell. My father is the late Levi Hardy, who is a longtime resident of Clayton County. I have no qualms with the development. I do have an issue with things being done decently and in order. The property has not been sold to DHR. They issued a, they sent in a contract over two years ago. They moved away from it. We went through another year and a half in the court with the court administrator. He came back in March of this year and said that ODH Horton has appeared again, and they are interested in the property. From that date to this date, which is almost a year and a half, we've heard nothing. That there's no contract, I mean, there's no, there's a contract there, which is actually a copy of the initial contract, where the dates were changed at the end of the contract, but the verbiage inside the contract and the dates inside of that contract were not changed. So we do not have a valid contract, nor is there a sale from D.A. Horton on the property. And so I would simply ask that another approval of the condition be, uh, number twelve, that they purchase the property. Otherwise, all of the preemptive site plans and zoning, um, petitions, they're simply preemptive. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else in opposition, too? Anybody else? All right, ma'am, you got four minutes as a rebuttal.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with that last issue there, but, um, we have our representative from D.R. Horton here that will be able to speak to that.
Jason Braga, eighty-eight hundred Roswell Road, um, Roswell, Georgia. Um, speaking to the contract, um, we do have the property under contract. It is a valid contract. An amendment has been sent out.
Yeah, which property on the contract?
We have all of the property under contract. So the O and I property, the larger property, and the...
Would that include Ms. Hardy's property?
Yes, it does. It does include Ms. Hardy's property.
Why is she saying she doesn't know anything about it?
We, uh, we do have an active contract. We have been trying to get ahold of her attorney to talk about the overall timing of the project, but we have not heard anything. But it is an active contract, um, and our legal has confirmed that.
Commissioner Davis.
Okay, so, I guess we... Has, is this, has your attorney been contacted? Can you come up? Come up, come up.
Yeah, come up to the podium, please.
The attorney is actually the county administrator, county appointed attorney, Mr. Chad, Joseph Chad Brennan.
Okay.
And, um, I've had problems getting connected with him myself over the past years. I've sent emails, and it may be six months before they return. So I cannot speak to whether or not, um, there is a valid contract, but I can't... Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Um, so, only thing that I can speak to is the fact that there is a contract that is copied from a previous contract that is not, that they changed the dates on the backside a year and a half ago, but the verbiage on the inside is different. It's still got the old whatever in there.
No problem.
So it's not up to date, and the property is not sold. That's the main thing. Should I step away?
You're fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, granted, these things, these things happen all, all the time, as long as it's contracted. My question is, when would this project commence as far as a shovel in the ground?
So...
I know after permitting and plat, but...
Correct.
When are we talking?
So if we can get, um, through the Board of Commissioners tonight, we have to go back to ZAG. We submit what is called a land disturbance permit. I'm hoping that can be done between eight to ten months, and I would be expecting to close on this property within probably, you know, twelve months of ZAG approval with the preliminary plat.
So if we put a condition in here that the, after, what, twelve months from approval, that this property will be, um, shovel-ready and moving forward? Is that a fair condition or not?
I would, I would prefer longer in case there are issues that come up during the approval process. We've had issues going through ZAG. That is, we've, we've had this contract, property under contract for over two years, so that's why I'm a little hesitant to say yes.
Mr. GK, is fif, does fifteen months sound fair? My, my whole thing is, if we're going to approve something, I don't want to give an unlimited time to making this area, uh, ready according to these plans. It's not fair to the residents of the community. And so I want to give them adequate time. But if it is not proceeding, construction is not proceeding, I say we pull everything and start from the beginning.
One question I would have for you or impose to you all is, um, I can't control the timelines when I submit it to the city, my, our permit plans, the city...
I understand.
Or, excuse me, the county. So if, if it takes us over that long, that timeframe, I would prefer not to have any type of, you know, condition to that. Um, it seems like it would put us in a burden and bring us exactly to where we are today and to the folks that we do have the larger property under contract, or just sending them back another two years.
Uh, Commissioners, um, I'm a slight correction. It does not take ten months to get an LDP permit. Uh, it's, um, one, if they submit their permit, uh, remember we have three phases of, of land development in the county. You go through the planning and zoning, which they are in the planning and zoning. They get into the land development phase, which will be their next step. When they finish that, it becomes the building phase. So what I would suggest to the board is that, within the number of months, Commissioner, that you're talking about, is that they, they actually mobilize the site. By mobilizing the site, that means they're starting the engineering aspect of the site, which means they will establish all the BMPs, the best millennium practices for environmental, and the part of getting the site ready and do the four stages of engineering, clearing and grubbing. When they start there, that means they're actively engaged.
Yes, sir.
I'm fine with that. I think just the timing of that, I just want to be very mindful that we have another project within Clayton County right now that has been in permitting for over ten months, and it has not been approved. So I would just like to say, you know, I would just like to be mindful that, you know, things do slow down during permitting process, you know, reviewers might have different opinions of, of things that our civil engineer might need to revise. So I would just be mindful that, hey, we need to be mindful that we could be sending everyone back on this deal if, if there is a delay with approvals, then we're having to start all over. And I think if there, if you are going to impose a timeline, I would ask it be from the time of either our permit submittal.
Okay, and when do you anticipate the permit submittal?
It, it depends on when we get the preliminary plat approved. And usually, once we get the preliminary plat approved, I would assume that we would be submitting permits within sixty days of that.
Okay. So, uh, my recommendation is that we, we give them eighteen months to have that part and move forward. Is that acceptable?
Eighteen, eighteen months from...
The time that, like you just suggested, that is...
So the time of permit, LDP submittal, land disturbance permit submittal.
And if not, we start off completely over. Is, go ahead, Mr. Reed. We, uh, my, my thing is, we don't want this property sitting in limbo forever.
The county has an ordinance that speaks to when and, um, permit, if nothing is done, it's over. It's eighteen months. Um, if there's no, if it was ban, abandoned construction, I would, um, just be mindful that we won't want to put a condition on this property that goes against what this board has already established as the timeframe. So if, if this ordinance, if the property becomes abandoned, you already have processes for abandoned as defined by the code. You already have process for, at having to start over, uh, again.
And that timeframe, within that ordinance is?
A building or trade permit where the work is permit, not commenced within six months, um, or suspended from six months is, uh, abandoned, um, considered abandoned construction site, and then they have all permits will expire eighteen months from issuance, except that the county officials authorized to grant no more than two extensions of time for a period of up to six months.
But, Mr. GK, if you, I guess, lucky you were ready to say something. So, um, so you're saying they can't, can't, you can't...
We are confirming here. Um, uh, two things. Um, the county attorney is addressing the building side. What we're saying to them, we want to have movement on the site, on the land development side, because the next phase they're getting into is the land development side, that we want them to mobilize the site. And the idea here is, if they spend the money to mobilize that site, do all that is needed for the engineering side, they will have spent a consider, a considerable amount of money that says they have invested interest.
I would just suggest that we do not put necessarily a timeframe on that, um, because, um, again, there are other things that can go into play from, to Mr. GK's point, a, the rights that they may have by putting work into it, by saying, okay, well, if you don't do it, based on an arbitrary timeframe, we could be infringing o, on that.
So I'm, I'm going to listen to legal. Okay.
So how, how you want to move?
So, um, okay, well, on good faith, I'm going to ask that we approve this, um, with the additional sidewalk.
Well, I think they had some conditions they wanted to address.
Yeah, but was the patio, can you restate that for the record? It was what with the patio?
Yes, sir. So for condition number eleven, we're just requesting that that be changed to, uh, it'll be an option for patios to be covered for all home buyers of the single-family detached lots. So they'll have that option when purchasing the new home, to have their patio covered if they choose, or to not, um, there would, you know, be that price difference on there.
Do you have that noted?
And you're in agreeance with all the other conditions?
Yes, sir. So I don't see it up there, but Mr. McSwain had mentioned also that all internal sidewalks would be six feet, but we had discussed, no, I may have missed, or five.
Or five, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Then it's just the condition eleven that we're requesting.
Um, since that, with the...
Yes, sir. We're in agreement with that and the other conditions as well.
Mr. McSwain, you got anything else?
I'm clear on the conditions. Just the wording on condition number eleven would be that, uh, covered patio shall be optional, if you're agreeing to that change for the record.
Thank you.
We're all clear?
All clear.
State your motion again, Commissioner Davis.
Sure. I move that we approve BOC twenty-four zero five dash zero four two eight, with the conditions as read and number eleven modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it is unanimous. Madam Clerk, uh, I'm sorry, Mr., Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session?
Yes, litigation only.
If I could get everybody to hold just a second, we're not finished with the meeting. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, on litigation only.
All right, is that motion going to executive session for litigation only?
So move.
Uh, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it is unanimous. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion to reconvene.
So move.
Uh, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it is unanimous. Mr. Reed, and please take them together.
All right. Uh, first is a settlement agreement between Samuel Salasberry and Raymond Nguyen, on the other hand, and this is related to a civil action style Samuel Salasberry versus Raymond Nguyen et al. in the United States District Court, and that settlement is in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and is related to an incident that occurred, uh, while he was a detainee within, uh, the jail. Next is settlement agreement, um, between Rayanna Simmons and, um, Levon Allen, the Board of Commissioners, related to an auto accident that occurred on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and that is in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Does it come in the individual's name?
Yes, it's, it's him in his official capacity. Um, it's the county, yeah, he wasn't the driver. It was, uh, the driver is... Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember who the driver is right now, but it's, um, but it would be the, all the individuals. It's just him and his, uh, as the sheriff. It was the sheriff's deputy that was driving the car. Uh, the next is a settlement agreement between Matavian, M.I.T.A.V.I.O.N. Williams, uh, on one hand, and Victor Hill, on the other. This is related to a lawsuit styled Matavian Williams versus Victor Hill in the Northern District of Georgia, currently pending on appeal in the Eleventh Circuit, and that is in the amount of fifty thousand, um, dollars, and that is related to, um, claims related to his detention in the jail on or about December twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen.
Same question, Chuck. It's, it's the same thing?
Yes.
It's really...
It's, uh, in his, in his capacity, yes. Uh, the next is Taska Jefferson, uh, on one hand, Christopher Canano, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, and this is related to a traffic accident that occurred on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and that is in the amount of forty thousand three hundred and three dollars and two cents. The next two are related accidents. First is Paul Calnan, C.A.L.N.A.N., um, and releasing Hoag Strickland, H.O.A.G.E. And this is related to an accident, I mean, a, a civil action suit, Paul Calnan versus Clayton County in Clayton County State Court, arising out of an accident that occurred on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and that is in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the last is Jerome House, um, also against Hoag Strickland in Clayton County, relating to an acci, a, uh, incident that is, uh, currently in litigation, Jerome House versus Hoag Strickland in Clayton County and Clayton County State Court, and it's related to a traffic accident that occurred on April first... I want to say it's April first, twenty-twenty-two, but I see a different date here. So it's either August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, or April first, twenty-twenty-two. But in any event, it's a lawsuit that is styled Jerome House versus Hoag Strickland in Clayton County and Clayton County State Court Civil Action File Number twenty-twenty-one C V zero two nine zero nine, and that is in the amount of, um, two hundred thousand dollars. And with all of these, um, with all of these settlement agreements, authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. expenses required under the terms of the agreements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it is unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night.